We are officially calling to order the meeting of the North St. Paul Planning Commission, January 2nd.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five. Wow, makes me feel old, sorry about that. All right, we have an agenda in front of us, anybody have any comments or want to make a motion to adopt the agenda as is?
Want to do roll call first?
Oh, roll call. Oh, yes, that's right, roll call is the first thing on the agenda, I apologize.
Thank you Riley.
I like to see things move.
I was gonna let you go and just go ahead and take it, but I thought, yeah, maybe we should take a roll call, so, excuse me, Commissioner Alvarez.
Here.
Commissioner Kane Burbak.
Here.
Commissioner Muick.
Here.
Commissioner Rothie.
Here.
And Chair Belize.
Here.
And Commissioners Wise and Gadboy are absent this evening, and then also present, Staff, Community Development Director Riley Grams, and City Council Liaison Jason Nordby.
All right, now, somebody wants to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Rothie, second by Commissioner Muick, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda, approval of meeting minutes from December 5th meeting, where we discussed, we had the public hearing about the cannabis ordinance.
That is correct.
And had a bit of discussion.
We did.
Are there any comments, changes, questions about the meeting minutes from that meeting? I did not see anything myself, so I would entertain a motion to approve the December 5th meeting minutes.
I'll, I, you want a second?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Rothie, is Sarah's second.
I'll second.
Second, from Commissioner Alvarez, any other questions or anything, discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. With that, the meeting is open to the public, and there doesn't appear to be any public So there will be no public speaking. And there will be no public hearings. And we are to commission business, item seven on the agenda. Staff report.
All right, item A is election of Chair and Vice Chair, and
Oh, yes.
Per Chapter thirty-two point zero eight of the city code, at the first regular meeting of the calendar year, the Planning Commission shall elect a chairperson and a vice chairperson among its appointed members, each for a one-year term. I do know that Commissioner Wise, who is absent this evening, did alert staff that he would be interested in the V, Vice Chairperson, I'm gonna call him VP, Vice Chairperson position, if the Commission is so inclined to so, other than that?
That being the case, I would call for nominations for Chair.
Bill Belize.
Mr. Belize, Mr. Belize, from Mr. Rothie. Anyone else?
Guess it depends on whether you want to stand again.
Hmm, interesting, according to the process and procedure, there's not a, I accept the nomination component, which I think there should be. I would accept the nomination, that's true.
You're just drafted whether you want to be or not.
I would, I would, are there any others? There are no others than nomination for Vice Chair.
Go ahead and nominate Mr. Wise.
Mr. Wise.
Seems to be agreeable to doing it again.
Anybody else? Anybody really want the job? See, that's the other component, nominate yourself, I suppose, couldn't you?
Good.
Good?
Always an option.
Yeah, okay, so we have a nomination for each, that being the case, I assume there's no other further discussion? In that case, vote for Mr. Belize for Chair, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And for Mr. Wise for Vice Chair, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are good.
You don't need to do it by secret ballot.
Unanimous.
You have to do an acceptance speech now? We save that for
Thanks, everybody, that's my speech. Now, we'll let some other politician do that, because politics is not my thing. This isn't a political position after all.
That's correct.
It's something somebody assigned me to.
You've done well at it.
All right, proceed.
You make it sound like homework, though.
To talk, well, it really isn't very much homework, because we have a very effective staff doing most of the work, so, with that being said, talk about the capital improvement plan, sir.
All right, well, each year, the capital improvement plan is obviously reviewed and updated by city staff as well as, and then approved by the city council. This usually includes many various amendments to the CIP, as city projects, other needs, various state, federal, local requirements, they come and go as quickly as they arrive, and the CIP is really a means to achieve the comprehensive plan goals set forth by the city. Obviously, the comprehensive plan is a longer-range guide more than anything else, it's supposed to take a look at past trends, future trends, and then try to put some goals in place so that the city can use that document as, really as a planning tool, to effectively achieve, try to achieve some of those goals. The CIP is, again, a sort of a subset of that, where more of a financial planning document, but you typically, staff would attach, for each of those goals, attach, okay, what kind, you know, what kind of equipment do we need, what kind of other capital expenditures are going to be required to achieve those goals? Obviously, the CIP is reviewed annually, and frankly, it's updated monthly, you know, in-house, just because changes in goals and tasks happen all the time. But the Planning Commission historically has been tasked with reviewing the comp plan per the state statute and city code, and then is necessary to be updated by the city before it can expend any of those CIP funds. So, the relevant city code that we're looking at this evening is thirty-two point two-seven, it's relating to the comp plan implementation. In your pack of this evening, it'll, it'll kind of describe a little bit more about some of the goals, and some of the things that the Planning Commission should be aware of when you're looking at the CIP amendments as it relates to the comp plan. You know, from my perch, we review this all the time, I pretty much look at it every single day, along with the Finance Department, so, we are continually churning out and updating the CIP throughout the calendar year, but really, this is just a good start, you know, stop, start point for the Planning Commission to take a look at the plans and provide any input to the city council that you see fit. So, I think for this evening, what we're looking for is if there's any recommendations to, any alterations that the Planning Commission thinks would be necessary, we could take those and forward those onto the city council for further evaluation.
So, just out of curiosity, on the, on the staff report, you have bolded text as to responsibilities of the Planning Commission?
Correct.
That's not changes, that's just, you were just highlighting that for us?
Yes.
To understand the nature of our, the nature of our duties.
Yes.
I have to admit, Section M gives me a very small twinge of heartburn, and I'm not really sure how else to say it, but, you know, we get along fairly well with the city council, but if you were to have a less than agreeable meeting of the minds between us and them, they could do an end run around us, around our responsibilities by saying they don't want us to take a look at things. And I, I don't really know that there is a solution to this, it's just that, it just seems like them being able to exclude us from something that we might need to, or might, should see, simply because they feel like we don't need to see it, or they don't want us to see it, if you understand my, my meaning there. Like I say, in many respects, I know it's not a problem now, I'm just thinking about what could happen in the future, and I don't really have any recommendations, I just wanted to express that concern.
One of the things I'll say to that, because there was talk a couple months ago, made well, of possibly changing something on a short-term notice, my understanding is if something that changes in there, and it does not come before you, because of expedited needs or for whatever reason, it now needs a supermajority vote from the council, rather than just a simple majority vote. So, not that exactly what you're afraid of couldn't still happen, but the requirements to pass it do somewhat change.
Okay.
So, the two-thirds is a supermajority vote?
Well, supermajority is four-fifths.
Oh, four-fifths.
Like I say, I just, I, I, I'm hoping it would never, ever become a problem, it's just that, you know, that's one of the things that I do in my job, is I look for potential problems, and how do we get, how do we solve those before they become a problem?
I, I agree with you that it does not, it's not a concern that I would express for today, for our current condition, but we always are looking at, what's the future have in store for us, so.
But, like I say, the supermajority certainly makes me feel better about something like that.
Is that what this is talking about? M isn't talking about what you mentioned, correct? Because this is, the city council made by resolution adopted by two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds.
Dispense with the requirements of the section, as in finding the proposed capital improvement as in relation to the comprehensive plan, so that's not what you're referring to.
Well, let's say that I would feel more comfortable if they would make that a supermajority, as opposed to two-thirds.
But this is the way it's written now, right?
No.
But you're referring to something different than this.
No, the
That's not in here, yeah, what you're referring to.
What I'm referring is not in here, this, it only requires two-thirds if we don't believe it has no relationship to the comprehensive plan. If it does have relationship to the comprehensive plan, and for whatever reason it does not go before the Planning Commission, then it requires that supermajority. So, he was worried about circumventing the Planning Commission.
Right. There's a separate path, but it requires a four-fifths.
There's a separate path, but it requires a four-fifth.
Well, what about the first sentence, shall review all capital improvements? I mean, isn't all, fall under that large category of all things related to capital improvements to begin with?
Right, unless, so, it's written, unless the council has deemed that it does not have a relationship to the comprehensive plan, which is really our, the comp plan compatibility is what our job is.
Correct.
So, if it's, if it's an issue not related to that, then they can by two-thirds vote say, okay, Planning Commission doesn't need to see this, and review it. So, that's the exception to the all items.
Got it.
I think that, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Because if it, if it doesn't relate to the comp plan, why do we need to see it?
Right, yeah, I agree with that. We don't want to get bogged down by having to look at everything and
I mean, it's bad enough that council needs to get bogged down by it, right?
That's what they make the big bucks for, right?
That's what they make the big bucks for. All right, are there any other comments related to the capital improvement plan? Are there any, is there, or is there anything from council liaison that maybe we specifically should look at or
Well, one, one other recommendation I have for this Commission, and it's because I think so highly of you, for this budgeting process, we moved some of the twenty-twenty-five comprehensive items down the road a little farther.
Right.
So, before the budget process starts for the twenty-twenty-six comprehensive plan, I would recommend that this board looks at, you know, like in May or early June, the twenty-twenty-six items, and gives the council recommendations on, these are things that, although currently are in the twenty-twenty-six plan, maybe we should move it to twenty-twenty-seven, maybe we should move it to twenty-twenty-eight, or here, something in twenty-twenty-seven, we think should move to the twenty-twenty-six. Because, once they are in the comprehensive plan, the budgeting process does budget for them, and there is no further need to come before council, I find your insight and information invaluable, so if this is something that the Commission would be willing to do, like say, come May-June, I think it would be very valuable for the city.
I would certainly support us getting a staff report, much as I hate to put more stuff on staff, about proposed budget realignments on items, you know, what, what needs, or what they would like to do earlier or later, and just like a couple of sentences or a sentence saying why, and it's, it's fine if it's just because of, you know, to balance the budget type of thing, doesn't have to be a, you know, a paragraph explaining everything, but I think that that would be great if we could see that maybe, I would recommend, when is the city's fiscal year, because I know what the state is?
Calendar year.
Calendar year, okay, then, yeah, just sometime in the summer, so that we've got a couple of months in case anything contentious came up, and we needed to go back once or twice to get additional information.
Yep, we can easily do that.
When, when does council start looking at the, seriously start looking at the coming year's budget?
Late June.
Okay.
June, July.
Okay, a little earlier than I thought.
Oh, yeah, so maybe May, then, if
Yeah, then we should do that in May.
And, and I think this year, we moved three to four items from the twenty-twenty-five down the road.
I noticed that there were some that were moved.
Yep, we can do that, I'll, I'll plan that.
Do you have something further?
So, being, this is, this is my first sequence through a year here, in my, my first January, so, planning commission shall review all proposed capital improvements, where do we do that, or when do we do that?
They're doing that tonight?
That's what we're doing tonight, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't actually see anything that was an alert, oh, what about this, or
Yeah, and if there was something, I would have, I would have
You would have highlighted it, yeah.
And I guess that was one of the reasons why I was making the recommendation, is to me, it's a little bit backwards that we're reviewing the twenty-twenty-five tonight, because that's already been a budgeted, approved, and everything's been levied for, where I think there's more value in us being a little bit more proactive, rather than reactive at the beginning of the year.
Agreed, very good concept.
So, I guess the one thing that I would say is, as you're looking through that information, if there are items that jump out for twenty-six, twenty-seven, et cetera, if we can have a listing of those items, I think that would be useful things for us to think about, consider, prepare for, you know, thinking on a two-year cycle, because I don't, I mean, I don't see it going beyond that at any point in time, but, you know, if we think about those two years, I mean, there may be something that jumps out.
Yeah, because I think there were a couple of construction projects coming up in the next couple of years, and I don't know whether there are items we'd need to review, but if we did need to, it'd be nice to be able to know about it.
You got it.
And Riley, has the, the document provided by WOLD for the building assessment been made available to the Planning Commission yet? Have you seen that?
I don't, I know I have not.
Building, what building assessment are we referring to?
Go ahead. I was gonna say, it's, it's a building assessment that
For all properties?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, and I forget, is it a ten-year? Can't forget how, seven or ten?
Through the bud, through the, through the year that you presented us, so, was it, was that through twenty-thirty-five, I think?
No, not, not that far out, I believe ten, ten-year, but we just got it, it was delayed in getting to us, I think we got it late November, almost.
Doesn't sound familiar to me.
Okay, but, but, I think it would be very good information for this Commission to have that at their disposal, to put a little bit of history and numbers behind some of
Is that a, just out of curiosity, is that a public document, available to the public?
The planning
Or should it be?
The council approved that, didn't they, accepted it and approved it?
I'm ninety-eight percent sure it is, but
If, if the council looked at it and voted on it and approved it, then it should be public.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What's the purpose of this document?
We, we wanted to see how we had been doing on preventive maintenance and maintenance of all the properties of North St. Paul. So, this evaluated, like, one through seven, where these things needed to be done for this property this year, seven could wait till ten years from now, and really help us budget appropriately for the life cycle of these buildings, because we didn't, a lot of it, we were shooting from the hip prior to this document about, when is, when is a roof needed on this building, when is a roof needed on
Public works.
Public works.
These are all city-owned properties.
All city-owned properties.
Even down to like the tuck pointing on this building, I noticed, was scheduled for, I think, twenty-twenty-seven?
Yep, yep, tuck pointing and, and everything. We just felt that in order to properly budget throughout the years for all the North St. Paul properties, we needed more than just a little shooting from the hip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did keep wondering, as I read the, the excuses, well, the reasons, I should say, in the report, that kept referring back to the WOLD report, and I kept thinking, I don't remember this report, but maybe it was online, and I needed to look at it.
Yep, I can get it sent to you guys.
And I'm assuming that, that's just the buildings, right? Because I did notice that, like, the vehicles also had several different timelines, some of them were like a ten-year maintenance replacement, and the others were on longer, so, I'm assuming that's coming from something else.
The vehicles were definitely coming from something else, but I believe it was all property, I, because I think it mentioned something about, like, some parking lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, permanent, permanent fixtures of properties?
Vehicles and such come, that, that, that you've, that's housed in the CIP.
It include properties, not, not roadways and things, but
Correct.
Properties where buildings sit.
Proper, yeah.
Well, the, sorry, there was some information there about the Margaret Street repairs and, and upgrades to Margaret Street, and a couple of others in there, so, that's also coming from a different document?
Pretty sure that's a different document. It was the same meeting, it was discussed at, but that was, that was a report from WSB, not WOLD.
Yeah, right, that's what I was thinking, that's who would
Yep.
Normally do that, so.
And believe me, I don't want you guys to have to do a large dump of paperwork on us, that's just, I just got questions.
Well, WSB did give us a comprehensive roadmap, shall we say, pun intended, of the roads of, when those are needed for reconstruction, too.
I remember seeing that last year, so.
Thank you.
Do we need to take action with this officially?
I'm just trying to remember if we do or not.
Well, if we do and we don't need to, does that put any minds on?
I, I think, I think you can make them, presuming you have no recommendations or anything related to the CIP, I think you could make a motion. Let's see here.
I'm guessing those are the two attachments that you included in the email?
That's combined five hundred pages.
We're not sitting here looking at right now.
Right. He didn't print all two hundred?
I didn't want to print five hundred pages.
Five hundred and forty-three.
That's right, it was five forty-three.
A lot of pages.
The one SIP itself was just two-hundred-and-twelve, but there, I think we got The one SIP itself was just 212, but there, I think we got two different SIPs.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, Riley, are you expecting us to be able to review that, review that document in its entirety?
I did.
Am I expecting you to? No. That is, that is the work of your talented and dedicated staff members.
Yeah.
And then, we would be alerting you of, hey, by the way, this item is in here for this reason, it was changed because of ABC.
Perfect.
We didn't have any of those for you this evening?
Yeah, or you should take, pay attention to this one.
Yes, I would, I would have called out specific things for you to pay attention to. We felt like there was nothing that came was coming out of left field, so I didn't, I didn't want to, yeah.
We are very grateful for our talented and hard-working staff.
We are, very much so.
We value them immensely.
Among these, the language that's in, on this document, I don't see anything that says, send this back to the council with our recommendations.
Yeah, I, I think if there was, if there were recommended changes...
Yeah.
That would probably be put into a form of a motion to be forwarded.
Agreed.
I'm not hearing any, so I think we could resume that. Everything looks good.
Like, we've had the discussion, we're good. Proceed.
Proceed. Yep.
And we'll just surface it in, call it a May timeframe, the one we'll review the information?
That's an excellent idea.
That's underway, so, we'll look into that.
I mean, if they're going to have their budget in June, maybe it starts in April, I don't know, just something to put on the table.
Yeah.
Depending on what our agenda is.
Knowing my finance staff, it's part I already started. And that's a good thing.
Yeah, very good.
But help me just clarify, so we're going to look at the 2025 one? That's what we're, that's what we're supposed to be looking at?
Yeah, so for...
But that's already been voted on?
It has.
2025 is already, is already basically, like you said, budgeted.
It's a great question, because historically, we've done that at the beginning of each year.
Okay.
And then you make recommendations for alterations...
Gotcha.
To the approved.
So, what...
You are correct, it's a little backwards.
We're kind of making arrangements, though, to change this, so that we start getting it earlier in the future.
And I, I think, I think what makes sense is, we could maybe do a, a review, you know, in that May timeframe, once we kind of know what's coming down the pipe, and then I think we could probably do this exercise at the end of each year, before, probably in November, or whenever, before the final budget's approved. Yeah.
Budget gets approved when?
Last meeting of the year.
Last meeting of the year, okay.
So, mid, call it mid-December.
That's what I thought.
Early to mid-December.
Okay. That sounds like a good plan.
Yeah. It makes sense.
Put it in writing.
I'm all about making sense, though. It makes sense.
Okay, that being the case, we're just rolling on with our agenda here. We are up to reports, so, let's start with our council liaison. Do you have anything?
I am just excited to say that I will still be your liaison for the next two years. The liaison assignments have been decided, and I, I feel like I won, because I feel...
How is that, how is that determined, by the way?
At the pleasure of the mayor.
At the pleasure of the mayor, okay.
No, I, I feel I won.
Apparently, you must have done okay at your job, or it wouldn't have put you back in that spot.
Exactly.
Either that, or else you're continuing to piss him off.
No, I, I feel I won the lottery with this commission, so thank you all.
Good, excellent, thanks. Which end do we want to start on?
Start with me?
Start with you.
None, nothing?
None.
Nothing?
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, I wish I had something really important to share, but...
Not really.
You're in the same role for another year, you get excited.
Yeah, we're going on here. I feel like, hey, we've got a good system, it works. Yeah, oh, I, yeah, I could do my speech, my acceptance speech, but I really don't have one truly, but...
Just out of curiosity, do we have any idea how well the occupancy of the new apartment building has gone?
You know, I have, we, I think the last time we heard was, it was over 40% occupied, but this was in, boy, this is late November?
Yeah, a couple months ago.
And they were getting multiple each week as we go on, so, that's, that news is well over a month old, so I'm sure it's higher now.
And it, it is, there are definitely occupancy...
Well, I know Chris is in there.
Chris is in there, yep, so, yeah.
In fact, we should have Chris, we should have Chris hold a meeting there, so we can all come check it out.
In his living room.
In his living room.
Exactly.
Wouldn't be an official...
I'll tell him tomorrow morning.
The one update to that I'll have is unfortunately, as of last month, we heard that none of the work units had been rented as businesses.
As businesses.
So, they, and their year timeframe commitment had passed, so they are looking to rent those as residential.
Yeah, I think we knew that that might be a problem when we looked at things.
Yeah.
As I recall, a lot of those live-work units in many places have had problems renting them out to businesses, which is a shame.
Doesn't mean it won't happen in the future.
Nope.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Yep, it is. Okay.
Just out of curiosity, I'm sorry, I'm curious, the, the parking space that's over there by Sidewinders, it's been up forever, do we get any expressions of interest on that at all? Because I haven't heard anything over there, I think...
The city-owned parking behind there?
Uh-huh.
I, I haven't heard anything.
Okay. I was just thinking, I don't think I've ever heard anything there during the couple of years I've been on the commission.
There, I'm going to guess and say, six months ago, there was a discussion in city council about whether or not we wanted to make it a green space, but there was some issues getting water to that space, so because of the water issue, it was decided to not make it a green space.
Really?
Curious, curious about water being an issue with that, but...
They could make a nice green space if they would do it.
Yeah, they could.
I could see putting like a ban shell in there for groups that always entertain there in front of Sidewinders.
It, it was just, because right now, it doesn't have its own meter, it was just going to be very expensive. So, maybe a problem isn't the correct word to use there. It was cost prohibitive...
Oh, okay.
To put irrigation, and we had looked at possibly leasing from one of the buildings adjacent, and that didn't get legs. So, problem was the wrong word, just cost prohibitive.
Okay. I did a preliminary design for a four-story building there one time, couldn't make it work financially. It's too small of a lot for that kind of a construction, with the restrictions of the adjacent property lines and stuff like that, it was, it, it's almost like, it almost needs to be a little bit bigger space.
Well, and I know, when we were talking about making it a green space, the last formal interest that we were told about was when someone thought they were going to be able to purchase the, the building next door.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because then it was a larger lot.
Yeah.
It made it much more attractive. Unfortunately, that, that sale fell through, so then the interest ended, smaller lot.
Yeah, it's really interesting, the, the way the, a lot of the buildings there, the one-story buildings were constructed, they, they are not conducive to building anything other than another one-story building next to them, and it makes it very complicated.
And I'm going to ask one more, and I'm sorry, but it's, the, the elevated lot that's further down there on Seventh, on the other side of the street, what's the story behind that? Does the city own that, or is...
That is privately owned.
Okay, I thought it was. And there's, has not been any expression of interest on that, or has ever been...
Privately owned?
Reasonably lately?
Don't know.
We don't know what they might want to do with it, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll stop derailing the process, the process here.
That's all right, we're just coming up to adjournment, unless somebody has something else. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
From Commissioner Rothie, second?
No, second, what the hey?
Second, Commissioner Muick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:04.